The League of Women Voters welcomes candidates to this forum to meet the candidates for running for Anoka County Commissioner, District Six. This includes Linwood Township, Columbus, Lionel Lakes, Centerville, Circle Pines, Lexington, and an eastern slice of Blaine. Check the Minnesota Secretary of State's website to find out which district you live in. Thanks to the candidates, the Anoka City Hall, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, the League of Women Voters is holding our Meet the Candidates forums without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. Questions for upcoming forums for the general election can be submitted on our website, So, think about that for the general election candidate forums. I'm Jerry Nelson. I am co-chair of the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters, the sponsor of this forum. I live in Champlin, which is in Hennepin County, and so I can't vote for any of these candidates. All the candidates for this office were invited, and the League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. I'm sure these candidates care very much who you vote for, but the League does not. The League does hope that each of you will vote. The goal of our forums is to help citizens become informed voters. The candidates in Anoka County District Six are Cindy Hansen, Jeff Reinert, and Kevin Ryan. Because more than two candidates filed in District Six, they will run in the primary election on August 11th to narrow them down to two candidates. We will begin with three questions that were provided to the candidates beforehand. This will be followed by questions that we have gathered from League members since we didn't have, we don't have an audience here tonight. The candidates will alternate who answers each question first, and the answers are limited to one minute. So, question number one, and I'll ask Kevin Ryan to start. Describe your background and community involvement.
Kevin Ryan, arborist, actively participating in the Lord's work every single day of my life. Planting trees, establishing the natural world, bringing people a little closer together. Where, you know, we have the houses that we live in, but it's the environment that we call home. So, as far as getting people a little closer to the ability to spend time out in their yards, or maybe having another five minutes with the kids playing ball, whatever it takes, we want to get the quality of life going. And as the rest of this goes, soil corrections, ponds, basically, who's who of the purview of the Anoka County. I sat on their 2020 study and did their outlines from whenever asked, participated. Thank you.
Cindy Hansen, describe your background and community involvement.
Hi, I'm Cindy Hansen, and I have served as an Anoka County elected official for nine years as the mayor of Spring Lake Park. I've served on the Anoka County Fire Protection Council for six years, the Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council for nine years, and its Governance Committee for three years, also the SBM Fire Department Council for nine years. I have achieved a Bachelor of Arts degree from Concordia College with a double major in Art and Business Administration. Sang in the church choir for four years, served in the kitchen of the church for three, taught Sunday School and Vacation Bible School, along with being an award-winning school volunteer. I have collaborated successfully on projects with Commissioners Bradstead, Schulte, West, Cordiac, and Silveraja, and I am a proud recipient for invaluable service to the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and support to the Military Order of the Purple Heart.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, describe your background and community involvement.
Yeah, sure. Jeff Reinert, currently Anoka County Commissioner for District Six, and 32 years married to my wife Lisa, got three amazing daughters, own a company called Min Farm. We make recombinant proteins for medical research. Civic involvement beyond my current position as county commissioner. I've lived in the area of Lionel Lakes for 45 years, and I've been on the city council for 20 years, served 10 years as mayor, three years on the park board, president of the Economic Development Authority, four years on Anoka County Fire Protection Council, eight years Sons of American Legion. I probably won't have time to go through the other dozen items here, but I think I'm the only person that has served an elected position in District Six, and like I said, I've lived there for 45 years.
Thank you. The next question is, what are your qualifications for serving as Anoka County Commissioner, and why are you seeking this office? Cindy Hansen, take that first.
Okay. I am running for Anoka County Commissioner because I believe in the board's mission of servicing citizens in a respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible manner. I have actually delivered results and can contribute to further that mission. Being an elected official in Anoka County for nine years has given me irreplaceable experience in leadership, negotiating, balancing budgets, prioritizing, being transparent, thinking outside the box, but most importantly, listening to people and giving people a voice. I have worked successfully with a two-county, three-city joint powers agreement for nine years. Also, I am recognized as bringing in over $55 million of redevelopment to Anoka County, including its very first Hy-Vee grocery store. My fiscal responsible approach to growth has created jobs while maintaining a strong commitment to public safety.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, what are your qualifications for serving as Anoka County Commissioner, and why are you seeking this office?
Well, despite my long service record, I am running for the right reason. I've lived in the area a long time, know the people, and I know what they want. But on top of that, you know, it is a pretty responsible position. It's a $300 million budget, 2,000 employees, fourth-largest county in the state. Somebody should have that position, and I have it right now, that has the right experience, has lived in the area a long time, do know the people and what they want. And those are my qualifications for holding this office.
Thank you. Kevin Ryan, your qualifications.
Well, I'm 50 years old, lived in the district for 48. I've worked for the people in Lionel Lakes, Centerville, Lexington, Columbus, Linwood. There's no one that's heard exactly what it is that needs to be said. I think I've represented them in their own backyards, in their own public, in their own private spaces, to bring those issues back into the public forum. And I think that's important to understand, that these issues have been sorely, long-gone, unsaid. Neither of my two opponents have used their platforms to address the systemic problems that we face here in the county. We have unfunded mandates, and we have an outrageous amount of money going out of the budget for these mandates. It's simple. If the lawmakers pass the law, they fund the law. Instead of playing this, whose team is winning today, neither team should be winning.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, you're first this time. What are your short and long-term goals for Anoka County?
Well, the short-term goals, I'm doing every day. As a lot of people know, we just had an election. I was elected on February 11th, and then I had to sign up to run again on May 19th, about 100 days later. But even in that short time, was able to do a lot. Right after my first meeting that I had, I jumped on a plane, went out to DC with three other of the commissioners, lobbied for a $40 million road project for Highway 10 and 169. We actually received those dollars from the federal government last week, an approval for that. But on top of that, Lionel Lakes, there was a road project that, on Burt Street, that wasn't going to happen until next year. The road is ridiculous. Was able to work with the highway department to get that done this year instead of next. For the city of Circle Pines, worked on getting them a million dollars to help close a trail segment that's been decades in the making, and they're pretty happy about that. Linwood, we're working on some senior housing up there. In Blaine, working with Mayor Tom Ryan there, and he's got some issues with how intersections are paid for, for cost sharing between the county, and we're working on, working through those issues. Thank you.
Kevin Ryan, what are your short and long-term goals for Anoka County?
Well, the short-term goals is to get the narrative back on track. You know, if you got to go out to DC and placate party to get money to fix federal and state roads, I think we have fundamental problems in our system. We need a line-item approach to all of our budget items. The people and the taxpayers need to pay for their share. The lawmakers need to cover their expenses. And this convoluted in the budget so that no one knows where dollars are going, or how dollars are to be spent, has gotten to be a disaster. Now, we're in good times, and these are the good times. This little shot over our bow with COVID and all the rest of the little issues that we're dealing with, we're still in the good times, and now's the time to get things restructured. And these restructurings are going to need to be taken seriously. Not placate the group, not try to win over the party or favor. This is push back.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, your short and long-term goals.
Well, I believe that right now, the county's short and long-term goals need to be focused on safely opening up and bringing business to Anoka County, which I have experience in doing, and I am a strong advocate for small businesses and working with businesses. For example, I worked on rezoning to assist growth for small business, and worked on allowing a business to defer their sack and whack fees, which allowed them to succeed. I would work hard to make business thrive in Anoka County. I'm still concerned with the lack of connectivity, IT security, and public safety. I am not a career politician. I am a public servant, and there is a huge difference. And I just need to make a comment about the mandates. All of us that I know that have held an office truly do not appreciate the mandates that are out there, and they have our hands tied.
Okay, let's move on to some other questions. The first one, Kevin, you'll answer first. How would you use this office to promote public, no, sorry, what measures would you support to improve and secure elections and voting in Anoka County?
Well, communicating the issues to the public has got to be the first part of this. When we have this good times, and everyone has theirs, no one participates. And then when we get down to the, you know, line up and around the block out in Linwood with one precinct, it's happened several times. It's kind of one of those things where it's obvious that people that were in charge didn't take the authority to make sure that they accommodated the public so that they could express one simple gesture, voting, and to have it be accommodating. Now, the rest of this goes is, we're going to have to have paper backup. I haven't seen an electronic system yet that holds anything as far as security goes. And the paper backup is going to have to be done with a full audit. All those things will secure people's vote and make them feel as if they've been heard.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, what measures would you support to improve and secure elections in Anoka County?
I also agree that there needs to be more communication. And I really don't know how I feel about mail-in ballots. During COVID, I think we're going to need something like that, but there needs to be a way of securing the information and making sure that people are only voting once.
Okay, Jeff Reinert.
Yeah, so, you know, I think this election this fall is going to be big. I think the primary is going to be lighter, so I don't think we'll have many issues there. We still have some time to work on it. The mail-in ballot is one that's, I think, gaining attention, might mitigate some of the issues. So absentee ballots, you know, people voting, I think my parents haven't voted in person probably in maybe a decade, but there's still time to work on this fall. It's going to be a big one, and I agree with Kevin. You know, you can't have people all the way down the block distancing six feet apart and, you know, half-mile-long line, you can't have it.
Thank you. Okay, Cindy, you're first on this next one. District Six lies between 35W and 35E, and a consistent complaint in the neighborhoods is about the cars taking shortcuts to save time getting on the highways or getting home exiting them. What can the county transportation department do to help neighborhoods deal with the problems these motorists create?
Again, I feel that goes back to listening to the people, having meetings, listening to what they say, getting out there. I know we had an issue when I was mayor on a street where people did the same things and big trucks cut through, and we literally stood out there so that we could experience what those homeowners were experiencing. And I was able to work with MINDOT, with the state, and communicate the issues and work out the problems.
Jeff Reinert, what would you do, or what should the county transportation do to help neighborhoods deal with problems of people cutting through?
Well, I think you're primarily talking about, you know, the Lionel Lakes area. If you're talking between 35E and W, you know, they join, and then for Columbus and Linwood, it's basically 35 up there. So for that area, what I am doing is working with the county engineer, Joe McPherson. We're doing a feasibility study on Lake Drive right now. It's a road that goes through Circle Pines and Lexington and Lionel Lakes, and then up into Columbus. And that road is in rough shape right now. It's been talked about being a four-lane highway. Actually, what it needs is to be fixed, be kept as a two-lane, and the speed limit lowered. Right now, it's at 55, and I'm getting a lot of complaints about that. And that's exactly what we're doing. That's the feasibility that we're putting together. And working with the county right now, they said that all those things are possible and will be part of the plan.
Thank you. Kevin Ryan.
Well, the traffic studies from, I don't know, I was going back as far as 20 years, has shown quite clear that J and all the rest of these east-west roads are obvious pipeline roads, and they've been just ignored. Now, anytime anyone needs to divert traffic, they don't seem to have any problem diverting traffic onto these roads. But the bottom line is, is that these roads have been left to go to ruin. And it's one of those prideful statements that all the commissioners seem to think that's okay to let these roads, instead of fixing what we got and making it work, we seem to just let it, let the shoulders go, let the erosion on the road go. Then you add a few more of the people onto the road, and it becomes a nuisance. And I totally agree that our roads are woefully inadequate for the traffic. The actual enforcing, stopping someone from using the road, that's next to impossible.
Okay, next question. Jeff, you'll be first. How do you perceive the role of county boards vis-à-vis the governor's office when the governor has issued emergency orders, and a majority of a county board's members eventually oppose the continuation of the orders because of what they see as harmful effects on the small-area business owners? And related to that, how would you use this office to promote public safety and safe social interactions to minimize the spread of COVID-19?
Yeah, so you're asking the right guy, because I actually did that. I presented a resolution to the county board, passed 5 to 2. And it kind of came about when I saw all the churches closed, and I just didn't understand why they didn't let people go into churches. I mean, certainly with the pews that are in there, you could social distance and, you know, go pray. From there, though, then, I'm going to Walmart, I'm going to Home Depot, I'm going to all these places, but I can't go to small businesses. Small business is not an object you can just set on the shelf. You're talking about people, you're talking about families, you're talking about lifelong investments, and why can that store be open but not this one? And so, we put a resolution together that stood up for small business, religious freedom, United States Constitution, and basically what we said is, let these businesses open up with the same rules of all the other businesses that never had to close. And like I said, it passed 5 to 2.
Okay, Kevin Ryan, what do you think about COVID-19?
Oh, well, let's just say that we've had these problems going around the globe. We can see that these problems were across in all the different countries. We've had near misses in the past, in recent past. For these people to jump off their chairs and say, this is unprecedented, and we don't know how to act, and that's just ridiculous. Basically, it was a cop-out to push all the expenses back off onto the individual. It was quite clear that there was no same or similar, there was no equal circumstances. And I would invite the public to bring about their losses and to bring about their damages. And I think there's a very good standing in the fact that having these people disproportionately affected with their businesses owes resolution to their injury.
Cindy Hansen, how do you perceive the role of the county boards vis-à-vis the governor's office when the governor has issued emergency orders, and a majority of the county board's members eventually oppose the continuation of the orders because of what they see as harmful effects on area small businesses? And what would you do to promote public safety?
Well, I would work with the businesses, work with the churches, and work with Jakel Hyder, the economic specialist for Anoka County, and see what we could do to increase business to come to the area, and ideas for opening things up safely. Businesses have to be open again, and small businesses, they're not surviving. And it's really a shame, because we worked really hard to get them here. It affects families, it affects all of us, and I do not understand why it's okay for certain businesses to be open, and then some of us are required to work because we're considered essential employees, and then we have to worry about what we are bringing back home to our families. Because sometimes, as a worker, it is impossible to keep that safe distance.
Okay, next question, and Kevin Ryan will be first this time. How would you reform the Anoka County Board and Staff rules and procedures to make the decision-making process more open and transparent to the public?
Well, you know, when you get done having a bad system, good people have to roll in and compensate and make work and workarounds. If you have a good system, and you got a bad person involved in it, or someone that isn't playing by genuine concern, then you're right back into the soup. So, you're going to have to have the system supported by good people that are willing to articulate and take the time. Now, your concern ain't going to be the same as his concern, or the concern of the guy down the street, but everyone's concern has to be included. This isn't something that we just do for our own convenience. And it has been a problem over the years to have those reforms would be, you know, based on common sense, based on the application, and you're going to have to step up to that.
Okay, Cindy Hansen.
I would like to see open forum opened up to the public. The board members are elected by residents, and I'm very confused as to why those residents don't have a limited time to speak at the board meetings.
Okay, Jeff Reinert, what do you think about reforming the Anoka County Board and Staff rules and procedures to make the decision-making process more open and transparent to the public?
Yeah, so, when I was mayor of Lionel Lakes, we had open mic for residents to come in and talk to the city council, but it was before the cameras turned on. And so, the public was able to address the council, but, you know, not on camera. And the first action I did as mayor is I allowed open mic to be on camera, and so I guess all the residents could find out, you know, what other people are concerned with in town too, because I think that's important to have everyone know. Maybe there's a problem that a resident has that no one knew was going on. Well, after doing that, everyone knew. You shouldn't, as an elected official, be afraid to hear complaints, because they are the people that you are representing, and I'd like to see, actually, open mic at the county, also working on, with the papers, to get a little bit more exposure for some of the actions that we do with all the papers in the county.
Thank you. Okay, the next question goes to Cindy Hansen first. Domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, and stalking continue to plague many of our nation's communities, but immigrant women, LGBTQ victims, communities of color, and Native women face particular challenges. What would you do to ensure that all victims of violence receive the protection and services they need?
They need to be able to understand that those services are there for them, and sometimes I think there can be a language barrier and a cultural barrier, and that needs, they need clarification on that, and to understand that that help is out there.
Thank you. Jeff Reinert, what would you do to ensure that all victims of violence receive the protection and services they need?
You know, I don't think you can ensure that everyone does, but you can sure, as heck, try. First of all, don't defund the police. But, you know, you have different organizations, nonprofits and such, that are available to those people in need. Alexander House, make sure that you, that they're funded and can handle the amount of need that's out there, as well as other organizations. And then advertise the fact that, you know, these services are available. But certainly, good police protection, and then a lot of these nonprofits that are out there to do that good work.
Okay, Kevin Ryan, what would you do to ensure that all victims of violence receive the protection and services they need?
Well, I think it's been well-established. Linwood had put on a couple extra officers from Anoka County, paid extra money, and out and on, the officers spent their time revenueing on the county road looking for speeding tickets. I really think if everyone followed their purview, and everyone stayed their lane, and watched their own bobber, I think we have enough resources on the table that these people could find the relief and the protection. But we're running around trying to pay the county's bill off of pulling in tickets and using our police department as some kind of collection agency. The first two questions they ask you, and this isn't something that's a secret, this is something I've been jumping up and down for, for like 20 years, probably closer to 30 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Reinert, you're first this time. A county commissioner is responsible for overseeing spending and managing budgets. Which two budget issues would you focus on, and why?
That's a good one right now, going through a pandemic, because everything is a little bit haywire right now. You know, the last time I ran, I talked about healthcare, and that, how healthcare doubled in the last 10 years, and there are some ability out there by some unions that are self-insuring, and one in particular, in the last eight years, hasn't had 1% increase. And it's an idea that I had, and when I got to the county, unbeknownst to me, they were already doing it. So, there is a micro program that they're doing right now, where they're supplying, you know, in-house doctor visits and dental, and they're doing it in county, and they're starting to grow it a little bit. So, it's an idea that I saw out there, thought the county wasn't involved with, some people criticized because it's, you know, new, but actually, the county's already doing it. It was such a darn good idea, they're already doing it.
Okay, Kevin Ryan, which two budget issues would you focus on, and why?
Well, it's pretty clear that we're going to have to tighten our belt. If people doesn't, you know, the tax base isn't there, and if the revenue isn't there, we're not going to, our bottom line is going to suffer. Now, it's really easy to say, well, we should go out there and maintain our roads a little better versus trying to tear them out and redo them, but I don't believe that it's the working man. I don't believe it's the function- I don't believe it's the functions of the county that we would be going after to take a look at budget cuts. I think there's plenty of expenses out there, and our two lines, I don't think, would suffice. I think we're gonna have to go through and systematically, line by line, prioritize what we're doing in the short term, and determine what can be put on hold. Expenses, big projects, you know, wishful thinking, those are the areas that we're gonna need to find cuts.
Okay, Cindy Hansen, what two budget issues in the county would you focus on and why?
Public safety and economic development. And I think at this time, they're pretty self-explanatory. We need to work with the police, we need to make sure they are safe, and we also need to help our businesses.
Okay, next question, Kevin Ryan. What should be the board's role interacting with Rice Creek and Coon Creek watershed districts? And how should the watershed board members be selected?
Well, Rice Creek, first experience I had, I went in there to help some lady that was trying to do a garden out in front of her lake lot. And they spent, oh, a whole ream of paper throwing things and rules at her about how she was gonna have her flowers so far back and all the rest of the nonsense. And then at the same meeting, three lawyers come in, increase the guy's parking, and use the mitigation pond to make the parking bigger. So not that they just increased the impervious structure, they lessened the ability for the water mitigation project. These are standards that we were all supposed to follow. Now, those three lawyers had it all wrapped up in five minutes. They drugged that lady around the room for the rest of the meeting. Now, when we talk about these boards, they're gonna have to have some kind of fair, equitable services. They're gonna have to be structured based on factual outlines and outcomes, not politics. And it looked to me like that was exactly what it was.
Okay, Cindy Hansen, what should be the board's role interacting with Rice Creek and Coon Creek watershed districts? And how should the watershed board members be selected?
Well, I feel that the Anoka County Board does not have the power to micromanage the watershed district. It is not the position of any board member to meddle in the watershed district. It was created to take the politics out of these issues.
Jeff Reiner, what is your opinion of?
Actually, the opposite's true. The watershed districts, in all the work that they do, at one time was the responsibility of the county commissioners. And then watershed districts were created. And so as far as appointing board members, it's very much the responsibility of commissioners to make sure that the right people get in there. I recently went through this for the Rice Creek watershed district. I was told to recommend, and when I went out and started working with the cities, I heard an incredible amount of complaints. I know as mayor of Lino Lakes, they're very oppressive in some projects that we had, wasted a quarter million dollars on a project. Other cities, millions of dollars. They put things in place and then cost cities a lot of money, and then they retract those rules, leaving the city with debt. And there needs to be accountability there. And so going through a process to make sure that the right people are on the board, and a serious drill down to make sure the right people are on the board is very important to the cities that are spending too much money and to the residents for good representation and for accountability of the board.
Thank you. Next will be Cindy Hansen first. How would you address the shortfall in funding for county roads?
I would love to reconsider the wheelage tax. I guess before I would impose that tax, though, I would want to find out why the county board repealed the wheelage tax, but that money was supposed to be set aside specifically for roads.
Jeff Reiner, what do you think about funding for county roads?
You said shortfall?
Shortfall in funding for county roads, yeah.
Like specifically, though? I mean, I don't know what shortfall you're talking about.
How would you address? People always complain about the roads, so...
Yeah, so, okay, I'll just give an answer on what I know about roads. Roads, when you build them, are supposed to be, you know, supposed to last about 60 years if they're maintained and repaired properly, 30 years if they're not. We live in a climate where roads are going to get damaged and fall apart. It's a constant issue, and roads need to become bad before you fix them. Why would you fix one before it got bad, right? So there is a pavement management plan in place. Everybody would like to have a lot more money on roads. I guess that's why I went out to DC to get $40 million to help out on Highway 10 and 169. And maybe the right answer to your question is, you know, have federal government kick in where they can to help us out where there's traffic that's coming into the county, that's traffic that is created that isn't from within the county.
Okay, Kevin Ryan, what do you think about, how would you address the shortfall in funding for county roads?
We waste so much money building roads 20 years out with these traffic studies and all these other pie-in-the-sky examples. We need to maintain the roads as we got them. We need to keep them good. Roads don't last 60 years. They don't last 30. They were at about 20. This is a well-understood concept within the county. This is something the county's been through. In the late 60s, or I should say, early 60s, they let all the roads go. They gave out the tax breaks. Everyone was gonna save all this money. These roads, we don't need to spend money on. And then the shoulders went, and then the roads went, and then we got caught having to rebuild everything. That was an atrocious expense. But the county dug down, got them done, got them updated. And now recently, in the last 15 years, we decided we were gonna give tax breaks and we were gonna do the bottom-line nonsense. So now you get to fix your vehicles for running over bad roads, and we get to all enjoy bad roads.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, you're first this time, and this will be the last question before the closing statements.
Okay.
Our county is home to union workers. What does supporting unions and the trades mean to you?
Unions are important. You know, you have, at one time in our country's history, where people were very oppressed and from large business. Unions did help the workers become, and actually, from their forming of unions, was born the middle class. I think that sometimes, unions can take it a little bit too far. In Lino Lakes, when I was mayor, we had four different unions to work with. Even when the economy was contracting, you know, they still wanted raises while the entire private sector is suffering and businesses are going out. So there's a balance. I do agree that unions are, or I said, or I should say, can be good. But they really do need to take it easy sometimes.
Okay, Kevin Ryan?
I guess it was based on the fact that you couldn't feed your family and that we had kids working in the coal shoots, and that they were doing 12 and 16-hour-a-days, six days a week. And this was based on the generosity of the businessman. He was making your favor. He was giving you all this extra work and that you're supposed to be grateful for. It is the right of the people to organize. This county is directly benefactor, the benefactor of unions. We are a union county. And that the money and the revenue brought to this county is our wealth. That's where the tax base came from. That's where these houses were paid for. That's where the lots were paid for. Now, if you think that everyone out there working their little tail off six, five, six days a week now, and that's too much, then I disagree. I think we need to support our unions, and I think we need to make sure that these are mitigated.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, our home is, our county is home to union workers. What does supporting unions and the trades mean to you?
I do really support the unions. I hate to think of where we would be without them. But I also support the employers having the control to pay their employees at a rate of pay that still looks good for the employer. But at the end of the day, I want everybody to be able to make a living wage.
Thank you. We're gonna go the opposite way of the first question this time for the closing statements. So Jeff Reiner, will you start, please?
Sure. So, closing statements. So I'm Anoka County Commissioner right now. Like I said, I've been in office for over 20 years. And the important thing, though, is that I've been in business for 35 years. And I take my business principles that I've learned over the years and I apply them to government. Little tough to do sometimes. But I do know how to work budgets and spend money efficiently, and that is the talents that I bring to office. Like I said before, you know, the county has a $300 million budget, 2,000 employees, the fourth-largest county in the state. You gotta have somebody that knows what they're doing. I have the right experience, lived in the area 45 years. I'm the only person that has served office in the district, and I'm serving in the district now as Anoka County Commissioner. I think I'm the right person for the job. I've done a lot of good things in the short time I've been there already, and will do a lot more before the election. And I'd like to keep the job. I enjoy it. I think people like that I'm in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Ryan?
Well, I think that we've got a gerrymandered district that goes from Linwood-Columbus that were bullied around by the people from Lino Lakes. The catch is, I like all the people in Lino Lakes. They're my customers. I get along fabulous with them. We have a special election that was based on the fact that our last commissioner gave herself a promotion to the city administrator. And she had zero qualifications to be our city, our county administrator, just to make sure that everyone knows about qualifications and what they stand for. And then, you know, if you're gonna stand based on your record, I don't see it. I think what I've stood for is I've been able to stand up at the time when it mattered and push back when it mattered. And this is the kind of thing that makes people feel at least that they're being heard, that, you know, running rampant in our town Linwood and bringing in all the trouble that they did and having me stand out in the middle of the road by myself to deal with it, I think stands for itself what I'm willing to go for and how it is that I'm willing to do it.
Thank you. Cindy Hansen, your closing statement, please.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this great opportunity and remind everyone of my nine years' experience as an Anoka County elected official. And it has given me irreplaceable experience in leadership, negotiating, balancing budgets, prioritizing, thinking outside the box, but most importantly, listening to people and giving people a voice and a vote. Remember my nine years' experience successfully working with a two-county, three-city joint powers agreement with the SPM Fire Department? This will be crucial in the lucrative development of the Minnesota Technology Corridor. I will work hard to bring business and help them thrive in Anoka County. I realize that District 6 has diverse areas, each having its own unique personalities, and I love and respect that. As a county commissioner for District 6, I would represent each and every one of these, not just one. I am running for Anoka County Commissioner because I can bring to the board experience, integrity, and proven leadership that you can trust.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about issues and for running for county commissioner in District 6. Thank you to all of you watching for your interest in becoming informed voters. You will find links to all the Meet the Candidates forums on the LWV ABC website as we move through this election season. Early voting has started, and you can request an absentee ballot or go to your city hall and vote anytime until the primary on August 11th. If you need to register to vote, you can go to the Secretary of State's website or register when you vote early or at the polls. Make your voice heard in the primary election by voting on August 11th. Thank you so much, and stay healthy and safe.